... sponsors. Sales of Celebration 98 buttons and advertising space for our program and raffle tickets have started to sell at the Oktoberfest and will continue throughout the holiday season with various corporate and local business donations to be used as incentives to purchase. No monies have been requested or anticipated to be requested from the town. As part of our fundraising efforts, we have a storytelling festival scheduled with master storytellers Joanne Wong of Acton and Liny Del Simmons of Westford. This event is scheduled for Sunday, October 26th, from 3:00 to 4:30 p.m. in the junior high auditorium, and it is sponsored by Community Education, all of the PTSOs. In summary, our purpose, as described this evening, is to provide a broad range of townspeople with an overview and description of what we are working on and planning for. It is our hope that we have given you detail and have been able to capture your imagination so that we can count on your support on that evening, as well as hopefully volunteering to help us put this event on in a fashion that we can all be proud of. We thank you for your time and attention. We will be in the lobby to answer any questions you might have. We will get all your names for volunteering, and we will get all your money for all the tickets we have here tonight. Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you.[80.06][80.06][applause] So now we're ready for the first article, excuse me, dealing with the Morrison land. The motion under the first article reads as follows. Mr. Mullin moves that the town appropriate $233,179.88 for the purpose of supplementing monies previously appropriated for the purchase of the Morrison property located on Concord Road and is shown on the Acton Town Atlas map, F4, parcel 34, and to raise such amount, $233,179.88, be transferred from the appropriation voted under Article IV of the warrant for the November 15th, 1995 special town meeting acquisition of Camp Acton. That's the motion. Do I hear a second? Motion's moved and seconded. Mr. Mullin, you going to show some slides, Bill?
Yes, Mr. Moderator. Making sure you're fully out of the way. Tonight, we're talking about the Morrison farm. I think people have heard about this quite a bit, and so we'll move along very quickly. We have the, some of our supporters from the Ad Hoc Committee to support them, the acquisition of the Morrison farm, Alan Warner, Karen O'Neil, and Susan Mitchellheart, as along with Tom Tidman here. We're going to focus, for anybody who's new, what is the Morrison farm? Why are we here tonight? What's the deal? And a summary. The Morrison farm on the map of Acton is located right about here, which is along Concord Road, just off of Two Way, near the center of town, and is really a keystone to the Center, Acton Center. It consists of about 32 acres of open space with some buildings up in the front. This part is substantially open, as at a Butts Ice House Pond, and at the back is about 16 acres of essentially white pine forest. Just in terms of what, why are we here, and what's the chronology? The town, I had long ago identified the Morrison farm as the number one candidate for acquisition under its Chapter 61A program. We began negotiations with the estate, and the trustees, as you recall, as I told you before at a meeting, asked us, as I put here, proof of town's interest, what they had said, "You ain't got no cash, you ain't got no flash." So we decided to see what the will of the meeting was and the town, to go out and find out whether we want to support this. We voted the $1.3 million unanimously last time, and then went to the debt exclusion override, which was supported substantially. The negotiations restarted, but during this period of time, just so to emphasize, we did not have a firm purchase and sale agreement, as we told you, and this was just to get the negotiations going again. They restarted, and we reached agreement in August on a new price and a new deal. The deal is, as it's described here, it's $1,615, I'm sorry, $615. Previously appropriated under the debt exclusion was $1.3, so we're here to talk about the difference of the $315,000. I'm very pleased to say that we've come up with a very strong financing package for that difference that does not involve any new taxes, which I'll explain in a moment. A lot of hard work was done by a number of citizens, most especially Maureen Bodner and Barbara Smith, who worked very hard to get $196,000 self-help grant back from the state. That for the Boy Scout land acquisition. So taking under the concept that that money was used for land purchase before, we allocated it to this. In the previous Boy Scout article, there was an unexpendited amount of funds. And the third is the WR Grace, we had a settlement with them about legal fees, and the purposes of that, those funds were to be used for environmental purposes, and so we were taking $81,000 out of the $100,000 and allocating to this difference. I must note that when I say there's no new tax dollars, that's absolutely true, but of course, to the extent that we chose not to do this, the $196,000 would go to free cash, and so under the concept that a dollar is a dollar, there's no new tax dollars here, but that would have gone to free cash otherwise. Under the deal, so-called, the reason we were able to get this at such a great price, there were prices of $3, $3.5 million floating around, and not long ago, $2 million, is that we're giving the widow Morrison a life tenancy, and that's, this shaded area on this map is the portion of the tenancy that she will have until her death. This map just shows a little more precisely how that works. These are the properties that are currently on the property. This is the horse paddock. In sum, the Morrison farm is and has been our number one priority for land acquisition. It'll be a wonderful location for active and passive recreation. It enhances everything around it. It opens up the vistas of Ice House Pond, which we have so, in such a way, worked hard to create, improve vistas. It ties into the ball fields of Concord Road. It preserves the beautiful colonial era Concord Road. It's town-owned buffer to one of our pride and joy woodlawn cemetery. It reduces the chance of expanding housing, putting housing into our center, which is, which the, with the resultant tax effect. It connects with the Shobor Brook and the various other waterways and trails, and as we say, the Morrison farm allows us to preserve Acton as we want it to be. Based upon this program, we recommend the article.
Do we have comments from the Finance Committee?
Yes. Excuse me. Ordinarily, the FinCon would not advocate using returned funds originally voted as part of another project for any other purpose, but in this case, since the town meeting has already unanimously approved $1.3 million for the purchase of Morrison land, and Camp Acton was a similar open space vote, we approve the transfer of funds in this manner. We remind you that it is really, excuse me, similar to taking funds from free cash without, of course, the need for any override ballot votes. The FinCon recommends the entire additional sum of $315,000 be approved.
Thank you. Are there other comments? Mr. Cadlec.
Moderator, I guess I have a question. If we need $315,000, we don't need to approve the transfer of the other $81,000, is that correct? The $81,000 from the WR Grace fund does not need approval of town meeting? I see a head shaking horizontally, so that means no.
Okay. It's under the discretion of the Board of Selectmen. Thank you.
Mr. Aronson?
Thank you, Ms. Moderator. First, a question for the Finance Committee, please. Could you tell us what the tax bill for an average home would be with the $1,300,000 that was approved by town meeting last, and for the $315,000 increment that you've just recommended to us this evening?
Mr. Maggie?
Mr. Moderator, I request that John Murray answer that question.
Are you prepared, Mr. Murray, to discuss that? In about two minutes, he can have that.
One of the reasons we weren't touching that is that I feel that you've got to go to the source of the, one who knows the numbers far better than I do.
That's fine. If I may, I have a comment.
Sure, go ahead.
Ms. Moderator. It seems to me that this is a perfect example of the appropriateness of the town managing its financial resources, using all monies that are currently available. For many years now, the Selectmen have campaigned against doing anything other with, other than returning to the town free cash funds that are in excess of or not used by the town manager and individual budget line items. As a matter of fact, the School Committee has regularly been castigated by that group for doing those very things. It seems to me this is a perfect example of how the town management ought to be able to use its resources and to take advantage of monies that have been appropriated for appropriate, relevant items. This is no different, I perceive, than coming to town meeting with extra requirements, as the School Committee has in the past, for special ed needs. I congratulate the Selectmen for using their prerogative and allowing the town manager to manage his resources. Thank you.
Good. We'll just, is there any other, anybody else wishing to speak? Seeing nobody standing, we'll just wait for Mr. Murray to come up with the calculations that he said he could come up with? Bill, did you want to say something? He didn't. I mean, it's not necessary you know. Okay. Well, is the question relative? I surely accepted the question, so I would guess it would have to be then, wouldn't it?
Mr. Moderator?
He's under great pressure. Mr. Aronson?
Excuse me. I submit that the question is relevant in that this town meeting is currently and immediately being asked to forego the return of an amount of free cash, which would have an effect of reducing individual homeowners' tax bills. And I would like to think that the town meeting is going to vote on this item, knowing what its impact is. Thank you.
That's why I thought it was relative, relevant. Gentlemen at the side microphone?
Sir, Jim Murphy, 375 Central Street. Just while we're killing time, I was wondering if someone could tell us what's going to happen to the house after the widow is no longer there? Just describe the property a little bit.
Mr. Mullin?
I'm in the consulting business, and whenever somebody asks a question like that, we always say, "It depends." So I think that the, it depends how long she lives. It depends the current, the status of the property at the end. It's difficult for the town to take over older buildings like that and manage them to the codes that exist right now, especially, you know, with ADA and handicapped access and all the standards that exist. My view right now is, I think the decision has not been made, but does anybody else? I don't think we've made any discussion on what's going to happen at this stage right now.
Well, that was the house. Just for my interest, how about the barn?
Oh, we're definitely keeping the barn, yeah. Anything else on the property?
I didn't care about the shed, but as long as it's mentioned, how about the two sheds?
The sheds are of very strong historical importance. Will be maintained forever. I don't know about the sheds.
John, you ready? All right.
The $1,300,000 turned out to be just under $19 on a $240,000 home for a 20-year bond period, and the $233,000, if that were to go to free cash, would be a one-time payment of approximately $35, $35 and change for a $240,000 home.
Thank you, John. Is there any other comment to be made on this motion? Seeing no one standing, we'll vote. All in favor of the motion as red, say aye.
Aye.
Polls say nay. Motion carries. We will move to Article II. I've got to ask Mr. Gilberti, is Mr. McGregor here? He is here. Is the motion I have the correct motion? Okay. The motion under Article II, Mr. McGregor moves that the town accept Section 9E of Chapter 32B of the General Laws effective July 1st, 1998. Do I hear a second? It's been moved and seconded. Mr. Gilberti, you're going to speak to Mr. McGregor's motion?
I have been asked to speak to it, yes.
Go ahead.
And I do not have visuals.
Good.
I feel the same way. I'll try to be as brief as possible. I did not sign the citizen's petition. The person that passed the petition around was called out of town and is in Florida right now, where I wish I was. I was asked at the last minute to fill in and try to make a presentation to make some sense out of what the citizen petition was trying to do. Good evening. For those of you that don't know who I am, I'm Donald Gilberti. I served as a member of the Board of Selectmen for nine-plus years. I have been a 30-year employee of the Acton Box for Regional Schools, and if the microphones fail tonight, it's my fault and the kids at work farmies' fault, because I'm in charge of the auditorium and whatever. I also have been in the public sector for 35-plus years, so I can speak to what is being presented in Article II, I think, fairly well. Currently, active Acton Town employees have 90% of their health insurance paid by the town of Acton, and the active Acton Town employee is responsible for a 10% share of the overall cost. Active Acton Public School employees and Regional School District employees have a little bit of a difference in that the 90-10 formula is not followed, but an 85-15 pre-tax split is followed, and that was done through negotiations. The 85-15 is, again, pre-tax. That is what presently exists for active employees in the town of Acton. Article II, as it originally was being proposed, was to ask that retirees, who, once they retire from the town of Acton, the public schools of Acton, not the region, it only included the public schools of Acton and from the town of Acton, to change that percentage formula from the 50-50 split that currently exists to bring it closer to an active employee, the 90-10 or 85-15 pre-tax split. This does not affect the region. What we have been told is that the citizen's petition, as presented, is not a legal motion to be made, that the motion has to only speak to enabling legislation to allow the town to look at changing that 50%, 50% number, to look at changing it through negotiations or some other method. So until we pass the enabling legislation, we can't even go ahead and talk about the percentage splits that we're proposing. I'd like to ask Norm, through the town moderator, if I'm correct, because it's Norm Cohen's opinion, what I've just stated.
I think we want to get an opinion of the town council now with respect to what you stated, if it's correct. Mr. Cohen. He said, "Yes, that's correct."
Correct. So what we're asking you for this evening is approval of the legislation to at least allow the negotiations, if that's the way it's going to go, to take place to change that 50-50 split for retirees. Now, why is that important? If you're a retiree and you've served in the public sector the way I have most of my life, I don't have more than 15 or 16 quarters under Social Security. When I retire in four or five years, I am going to be paid strictly under the state retirement system. I will not have the benefit of having a second retirement fund in Social Security. Without having that second retirement fund in Social Security, I am not going to, at 65 years old, be eligible for Medicare A and B. I only must subsist on what I am paid under the state retirement system. Under our state retirement system, they have seen fit, over the last 20 years, to only provide approximately four to five cost of living increases based on $9,000 of the retiree's salary. What has taken place is retirees are constantly falling backwards because the state has not kept up with its commitment to provide a retirement income based on the work that the person has given to the community, the community here in Acton all throughout the state. Because of this, when a retiree retires and finds that his health insurance drops down to 50%, that percentage is almost a backbreaker. As health costs continue to rise, as health insurance continues to rise, the retiree, especially the retiree not covered by Social Security, is constantly going backwards, many times cannot survive, and has to take a second job in retirement or a job in retirement. For a number of years, the retirees have come to the Board of Selectmen. When I served on the Board of Selectmen, they came before the Board of Selectmen, and they asked that this 50-50 split be changed to whatever percentage, but please change it. It was harming the retirees who were retiring at little income, that was not being increased by COLA or the state, yet they constantly saw the health insurance going up and up and up, and that 50% was a backbreaker, dropping from the 90-10 or the 85-15 pre-tax of the school people. If you can understand where I'm going with this, the citizen's petition was aimed at changing that split and bringing it up to 75-25. The employees, the retired employees, found they were in a catch-22 position. They would go to the Board of Selectmen, the Board of Selectmen would say, "Well, we're not going to do it," or "It should be done through negotiations," yet there is no current union, and not all employees are unionized, but there is not one of the unions that has been willing to fight for retirees. They fight for their active members, not retirees who do not pay to belong to that union anymore. So they're in a catch-22 position. Tonight, I heard the Finance Committee take a position. Their position was, "Well, this should all be done through negotiations, not on town meeting floor, but if we can't get the enabling legislation passed, it can't be done at all." So what we're asking you for in this amended motion or changed motion that was read, for you to improve that enabling legislation, that allows the town to even talk about changing the percentage. I have heard the Board of Selectmen say exactly the same thing. Not appropriate now, it should be done through negotiations with our individual unions. Unless every union in the town of Acton, that means police, fire, highway department, school unions, unless every one of them agrees to support working for the retirees, if one says no, then it's not going to happen. The state says everybody must be in agreement in supporting this. The only avenue the citizens felt they had was to come before you this evening and to ask town meeting to change the percentage, because the Selectmen haven't been willing to, and it can't be done any other way. Now we're told that the petition that was presented only allows us to come before you and ask for an enabling legislation. What I'm prepared to do, if this passes, the enabling legislation, I am prepared to offer a resolution to the town, a non-binding resolution, that if you people urge the Board of Selectmen and the School Committee to increase this percentage to 25, 75%, 75-25, that they be urged to do that, then that will have some weight when the retirees seek to get this changed in the future. I thank you for listening to me. I hope I've not clouded the issue. It is a very, very complex issue. I'm urging you to support Article II, which is enabling legislation to allow, at least negotiations, to begin to change that percentage upwards for the retirees, the people that have retired and served this town well for many, many years. Thank you very much for hearing me.[1494.82][1494.82][applause]
From the Board of Selectmen, Mr. Fredericks, you're winding your way to the microphone.
What did I get him?
You just sneaked up on me with that one.
How's that?
All right. Well, to start with, Board of Selectmen do not recommend this article, and I'd like to explain our position as best I can. I have no problem with everything Mr. Gilberti explained to you, except for one minor thing, which I'll get into in a little bit. The main reasons, before I start giving you a presentation that's going to give you more information than you ever wanted to know about this, the main reason that we feel not to support this article is that there really is no benefit to the town. If we spend money on schools, we get a school. If we spend money on a sewer, we get a sewer. This is a nice thing to do. It'd be nice to do it if we had the money. In this case, I think it's up to you, the voters, to decide if you want to give your money to this particular program. I will go into some on the cost. We think it's somewhat bad policy to do some of the negotiation after the fact. I'll pick, Mr. Gilberti, one little point. He's right in saying that nobody is representing the retirees. However, in the collective bargaining situations, there is a bargaining, there are a number of bargaining chips that go onto the table. When we said that this should be part of collective bargaining, what we meant is that if it's a chip that's on the table for the active employees, for their benefit, when they become inactive, it's part of the bargaining process, and we don't have a problem doing it that way. I believe, I'm not sure that we know, but that state law would have it, whatever we did for the present active become inactive, we would have to do it for all of the inactive employees. So the fact is, there is a method for the collective bargaining to handle this particular situation. Now you're going to see more than you ever wanted to see. Employees are classified into basically two groups in the town. Well, there's three groups, one, two, and four, but two are state employees, all of town employee, all municipal employees are in two groups. Is that going up right? Oops. Get it over here a little bit. Group one is all employees, town employees, except teachers, police, and fire. Basically, the average current base wage is shy of $21,000. Now, this includes temps and part-time workers as well. You can see that their benefits at 32 years approaches somewheres in the $18,000 range. I've got more on that later. What I'm trying to do is give you a feel for the retirement package that they get, not just an insurance premium. You can compare this to the people that don't have municipal retirement income and have Social Security instead. The packages are different, but we feel that the package that the town offers is a fairly decent package. You can see that the group four... You can see that the group four... The group four average base wage is $36,000. The 32-year from the graph is approaching $25,000 in retirement income, which we think Also, what we did was we took a typical employee. We made some assumptions. We said, "Let's take somebody age 62 that was 30 years old when they joined the town. They retired today after 32 years of service, and they have a $40,000 base wage." Under the existing program of 50-50, this person would have a base wage of $28,000 plus a health insurance benefit of $4,600, which gives them a $33,000 retirement income. To put some more numbers on it, at 75-25, the difference of the annual increase is $2,300. So that's the number we're talking on for an average employee, or typical employee, Now, what does this cost mean to the taxpayers of Acton? To start with, under the group one and four plans, just for the town employees, Acton Public Schools, not Acton Regional, but Acton Public, it's $80,000 a year. Now, the vote that we would be taking is for the town employees and the public school. However, if the Acton Public Schools gets a certain retirement package, the Acton Boxborough Regional School will get it too. That adds $70,000 to it. So now we've got a cost here to the town of $150,000 first year. Now, what does this mean over the next couple of years? As you can see from the chart, in 15 years, we're talking in today's dollars of $263,000, which is a substantial amount of money. We've made a couple of assumptions here. We've assumed that the number of people opting into the program are equal to the number of people getting out of the programming. We're again guessing this. The number of people that were in the $80,000 figure were roughly 58 percent of the retirees, which means 42 percent are not taking the 50-50 deal. We have no idea how many people will take it when it goes to 75 percent, but our guess is that considerably, considerable amount of the 42 percent now that are declining it would opt to take it. Just for information's sake, we've got about 55 percent of active town employees that do not take the insurance program. And you might say, "Well, why don't they take it?" Well, they probably have a spouse that has a better, a better plan. But as soon as you start making the plan more attractive, more people are going to take it. And right now, we've got less than 60 percent taking it. These numbers don't consider that. This is the conservative numbers. This is if it attracts the way that it attracts right now. And we know that's not going to be the case. Again, I'll repeat, the Board of Selectmen do not recommend this article mainly because of lack of benefits to the town and the cost. Thank you.
From the Finance Committee, please. Mr. Liberty.
While the FinCom is sympathetic to the issues raised here, our concern is that the town has not had sufficient notice of this motion to make a fully informed decision. More important, we believe it is not appropriate for Town Meeting and that there are other avenues for negotiation. Therefore, the Finance Committee has voted to recommend against this warrant article.
Do I hear... Did you have a comment on what Mr. Liberty said? Seeing no one else standing, go ahead, Mr. Gilberti.
Again, let me make this comment. I said to you that we can't even negotiate without the enabling legislation, which is spoken to in this motion, is approved by Town Meeting. Learned Selectmen just could finish saying this should be done through negotiations. Learned Finance Committee said it should be done through negotiations. But we can't negotiate until you approve the enabling legislation, which is spoken to in motion under Article II. Unless that's adopted, then these employees are back in a catch-22 position where they cannot negotiate this because it hasn't been allowed by enabling legislation. Thank you.
At the back microphone.
Bob Evans, Old Meadow Lane. I'm going to say exactly the same thing, and that is it should wait for negotiations. And over the years, I've negotiated a variety of contracts for the School Committee with its employees. There's nothing to prevent the negotiations from agreeing that part of the package is that the retirees are going to get whatever it is that the negotiators agree on in return for whatever it is that the teachers or the custodians or whoever it is that's involved is willing to give up, contingent upon coming to Town Meeting once the deal is settled and telling you folks, "Look, we've negotiated this, it is good for the town because of whatever the circumstances are." And without knowing what they might be, it's a little hard to say what that, what that benefit would be. But we can do it, and we've promised to come and ask you to allow us to do this. There's nothing to prevent all of the unions in town from agreeing that somehow they're all going to get old, and I see enough gray hair around, including my own, to assure you that it does happen, and to make provisions for this. Mr. Gilberti spoke about the 90 percent, 10, and the 85-15. There was a time when we did attempt to get all of the unions in town to negotiate downward in their percentages in return for other kinds of things. And we're able to do it on the school side and the negotiations on the town side, for whatever reason, did not move in that direction. But this is not to say that a new effort, especially if all of the current employees who are unionized, were willing to come forward and say, "This is important to us, and we're willing to give up something if you'll give this to us when we retire." And of course, by implication, obviously, would give it to those who are currently retired. So negotiations is really the answer. And then you can come to Town Meeting and say, "We've done this, we've got to have your permission before we can put it into effect." So I urge you to vote no.
Mr. Penderel.
John Penderel, 27 Elm Street. As I understand it, there are three negotiating entities for the town, plus no negotiating entity for the town employees. And I think the enabling legislation that could be passed tonight would ask the town to engage in negotiations with the employees, the retired employees. And being a retired employee of a large company and having been involved in negotiations, asking a union to come in and negotiate for retired employees, as was pointed out earlier, is rather a non sequitur. Number two, a survey of the surrounding towns would indicate of the four around, Concaut is at 50 percent, but Maynard is at 75, Littleton 70, and Harvard 70 percent. And three, I think in our considerations, we have to take into account, this isn't strictly a financial matter. Longtime employees deserve the same considerations as Acton's infrastructure, its buildings, its streets, et cetera, its active employees, and what we're going to be asked to do subsequently in the following year, its schools and its students. Thank you.
Anybody else wish to make a comment? I'll hear from Mr. Brody first. Mr. Fredericks, did you have a comment? Before you get on, I want to know what the nature of the comment is. Okay, let's take Mr. Brody first and then Mr. Fredericks. Mr. Brody.
Thank you. I guess I was struck by the comment that this particular motion before us gives no benefit to the town. What more benefit can there be for people giving to people? The retirees that we're talking about have given to us for an average of 30-some years. There may be more retirees needing to be given to as they continue to try to make it in a tough society where health costs are rising. We've received a benefit upon benefit while the retiree was active. We should not abandon our civil servants while they are in their most need. They've helped us to care for our own, we need to continue to help care for our own. This is a social benefit, it's a moral benefit, it's the right thing to do. It's certainly the right thing to do to give these folks an opportunity to negotiate with whoever. Thank you.
Mr. Fredericks, you may make your point. Mr. Fredericks. Well, no, you don't get a chance to pick your slots here. Go ahead.
I was hoping. What I wanted to do was clear up something that John Penderel repeated that had been stated by Mr. Gilberti. I thought I kind of cleared it, but maybe not. So it is confusing. The question came up, who negotiates for the retirees? Actually, nobody negotiates for the retirees, retirees, except the negotiation and the bargaining that we're talking about is done by the active employees through their unions, and any one of the unions would suffice, to make this an issue for the active employees when they will retire. When that is decided, it will be implemented by the town to make it all the same, and the existing retirees that have nobody negotiating for them will just have gotten something negotiated. So they will get a benefit from that. But it's done by the active employees for when they retire. And whatever package that is will follow on to the existing retirees. So that's how they get it. So there is a system in place for doing this. Thank you.
The gentleman at the back.
Dean Cavarretta, Mass Ave, Acton. I just wanted to ask Mr. Gilberti, anyone, the qualifying factors is 20 years plus. Is that like the state on a town retiree? That's question number one. And question number two would be, if an approval of Article II tonight does not appropriate any money, doesn't in fact just ask to seek this enabling legislation, if you could briefly talk about that enabling legislation as well?
Could I ask, John Murray of Don Johnson, is 20 years, I believe it is in the town, 20 years before you're vested in the retirement system? Is that 10? 10 years and you are vested.
So after 10 years, you would be eligible to...
Correct. And your second question again?
The second question was if, if Town Meeting or a voter approved or voted yea on Article II, what is the next step if this passed tonight?
The enabling legislation would be adopted by the town. I am going to then ask for a resolution urging the people to urge the Selectmen and School Committee to negotiate this percentage to a higher rate.
Okay, so the trigger from 50 to 75 percent does not occur tonight, even if Article II passed?
Not at all. Correct. This is strictly enabling legislation.
Mr. Aaronson.
I'd just like to support Mr. Fredericks' position about negotiations. My recollection is that in the negotiating process, at least at the School Committee level, I discovered that in order to obtain the opportunity to, for instance, change the healthcare coverage plans that the school union bargaining groups and the town union bargaining groups have currently, an opportunity which some negotiators believe could in effect save the schools and save the town substantial monies, and yet provide employees with similar healthcare coverage, also at a lesser cost. And the way to reduce the town's cost would be to reduce the percentage from the 90-10 or the 85-15 to even lower amounts. The only way that could occur is to use Mr. Gilberti's example of requiring 100 percent of the bargaining groups in the town and the schools to agree. Seems to me it's only fair to have it, if you want it both ways, you have to use it both ways. That's a perfect example and a perfect lever for both sides in negotiations. I believe that's the way it ought to stand. Thank you.
Gentleman at the back.
Warren Leon, Main Street. I'm not sure I understand the implications of this vote. The reason for that is it's enabling legislation to require negotiations between the retirees and the selectmen. Well, in a negotiation, you normally have to have an incentive for both sides to reach an agreement, and you have to have a situation where each side needs to win over the other side to their position. In a case like this, even if we pass the enabling legislation and the selectmen do not believe it's a good idea to change the existing percentage separate from the negotiations with the unions, they have no incentive to do anything. You don't really have a negotiation, so I'm not sure what the point of passing this would
Gentleman at the front.
Well, I'm just about as confused. Martin Grotz, Stowe Street. I'm trying to sort this out. That last question helped a little bit. Mr. Gilberti says that without this particular legislation, retirees or their representatives can't negotiate with the town boards for any changes in the percentage of their health benefits. The Board of Selectmen and the FinCom don't come right out and say that this isn't so, but sort of imply that, "Well, no, that's not in fact the case." They can come and negotiate these percentages. So I, my confusion is, is it necessary? And if it is necessary, what does it provide that isn't already in place?
Mr. Hunter.
In answer, Dre Hunter, 3 Foster Street, Board of Selectmen. In answer to the previous gentleman in the back's question, and I think in inference the last one, basically what I think is transpiring here is they're seeking the authority in this special Town Meeting, low attendance, and will be back in the annual Town Meeting to ask for a warrant article to appropriate it. Negotiation assumes a give and take. It's clear with the active unions, generally speaking, they want more money in wages and the town wants management rights, and there's a balance struck. If a retiree comes in, they just want money, and as Wayne said, there's no, nothing that flows the other way. Once this enabling legislation is passed, I expect what we'll see is further process at Town Meeting. I think that's what we're about here.
Mr. Gilberti. I'll get you next, Mr. Cavarretta.
I think what we get by the enabling legislation, again, let me back up and say, retirees have come to the Board of Selectmen in the past and asked for a change. The Board of Selectmen, as Wayne has already said, have taken the attitude, "It's not going to benefit the town, we're not going to change it." I think what we're attempting to do this evening is to bring it to the town's people. This government runs by the town's people. With your passing the enabling legislation, you are instructing our selectmen to look at this and enter negotiations to change it. Unless every union in the town, and not all town employees are represented by unions, there's a big group out there that don't have unions, unless every union is willing to fight for this, then if the teachers' union says, "This is great, let's go with it," and the police and fire and highway says, "No, we want it in our paycheck," then the whole thing goes down to defeat. Well, we're asking you people for as a sense from the town's people that the town runs by the people. You instruct the Board of Selectmen that they should negotiate rather than just dismissing it and saying, "It's not going to benefit the town." Thank you.
There's two people at the back microphone. The lady has not spoken. Mr. Cavarretta, you have. I'll recognize the lady at the back microphone.
My question is to you, sir, have you tried to work with the union...
Excuse me, would you introduce yourself, please?
Oh, I'm sorry. Susan E. Framan, I live at Arlington Street. Have you tried to work with the unions to influence them to approach the town on your behalf? Because it seems to me in these days, many people are aware of the perils of retirement and that they would not be short-sighted and they would see that this would be... and that they would not be short-sighted and they would see that this would be in their own best interests. So I'm wondering if you did use that approach, even though it has to be a multifaceted approach. I think it sounds like, I would like to know if you've done that.
On this specific issue, no. Let me give you an example. Many years ago, when I negotiated, as a negotiator for the teachers, with the school committee, I approached all other unions in the town of Acton. I had young kids growing up in Acton, and I asked each of the unions to support our jointly fighting for dental insurance as part of our health insurance. Each union accepted, except for one, and they said, we want the money in our paycheck. When one union pulls out of this coalition, then it kills everybody else's attempt to bring this about, to change. And as I said, I was discouraged at that point in fighting as a negotiator for the teachers.
Mr. Cavarretta.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I just had a question regarding the breakdown of retirees. Do we know how many eligible Acton town retirees are still in the area? And I basically throw this out as an idea. It was mentioned before that, you know, we don't have a return on this benefit. One can make the argument that if this is eligible for Acton retirees, it's an indirect way of controlling town growth by somehow making it available that active retirees who want to stay in the area could trigger this extra benefit. It's just a thought. Another thing, too, this question is to Mr. Gilberti, does this, do retirees that work for the town have equal representation and voting power in the union if they are in the union?
Don, you can answer that if you want.
If that was clear.
I'm sorry, I didn't ask you.
Yes, go right ahead.
Retirees, it's my understanding, are not in the unions or associations once they retire. They do not have a group that represents them at all except themselves.
Mr. Frederick.
To answer your first question, we didn't do a complete analysis, but I had the same question, so I just paged through the list of retirees. And ballpark numbers, I'm just guessing now from going through, 80 to 90 percent of retirees do not live in Acton.
Gentleman at the front microphone.
David Black, Central Street. Move the previous question.
Do I hear a second? All in favor of cutting off debate, say aye. Oppose, say nay. Debate is cut off. We'll now vote on the motion as read under Article Two. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, say nay. Let's try that standing, please. Would all in favor, please, stand? And would all opposed, please, stand? Because this is an important vote, I'm going to ask the tellers to come forward. I believe it wasn't all that close, but I don't want to call it myself. So would the tellers come forward, please? Have they been sworn in? They have been sworn in. And we will, they'll tell us when they're ready to count, and we'll count it. Motion, ma'am.
Could Loretta Roscoe and Ed Ellis, please come down to be a teller? Thank you. Specific people. And I need Mr. Richter and Mrs. Miller, Andrea Miller, too, please.
Excuse me, Bell, did you say you're ready to vote?
Not yet.
Not yet, okay. Okay, would all in favor of the motion, all in favor, please stand and display your green cards, I think it is.
Mrs. Huber, Connie, I need you to slip.
Would all opposed, would all opposed, please, stand? We have the results. The vote is 173, 173 yes, 118 no. The motion is carried. I'll recognize Mr. Gilberti.
Thank you. Please don't anyone leave. I have a resolution that I would like to present to the town for your adoption this evening. It's a non-binding resolution. Resolve, be it resolved, that with the adoption of Section 9E of Chapter 32B of the general laws, that the selectmen and school committee, at the urging of this town meeting, increase the town's and school committee's contribution for retirees' health insurance from 50 to 75 percent as of July 1, 1998. Thank you.
Do I hear a second to the resolution? Comments on the resolution? Mr. Gilberti, do you wish to make a comment on it? Does it stand on its own?
It stands. It's only urging. It does not require that they do this. It is the town meeting showing their support for this change to take place and urging the school committee and Board of Selectmen to look at the percentages. Thank you.
Excuse me, Mr. Gilberti, may I have a copy of the resolution, please?
Yes.
Ms. Chang.
I would like to see the resolution expanded to have a concomitant reduction in the health insurance premiums that we pay for the active employees. In other words, if we take a 25 percent increase in the retired employees, I'd like to see a concomitant decrease in the active. And I thought it would be 2020, so we would raise it to 70-30 for both.
Well, I take that as a, not an amendment to a resolution. It's just a thought or an idea. Is that correct?
Yes.
Dr. Donald.
Mary Donald Taylor Road. Am I on? Does this mean it does, it takes it all out of town meeting? Town meeting would be before July. And this resolution indicates that we don't even have to discuss it again?
Mr. Hunter?
It's generally been our custom to bring new programs to town meeting for vote. I would anticipate if the resolution, well, even without the resolution, I would anticipate that there would be a warrant article on the April town meeting when we have a full turnout for financial matters, and we'll resolve it at that time.
Gentleman at the front microphone.
Ed Russell, O'Nider Road. The previous comment is exactly why you don't do these kind of negotiations during town meeting. In general, I encourage the selectmen to do the best for its employees and retirements that they can do during negotiations. And I don't understand all the particulars of the budget and everything else, and it would be very inappropriate of me to influence the selectmen on one particular issue. And we just saw Pandora's Box gets opened. I have a whole bunch of issues I'd like you to consider, and town meeting is not the place to do union negotiations.
Will we comment on the resolution? Seeing nobody standing, we'll vote on the resolution. Mr. Cadillac, go ahead. We only have one more quick article, and it's not even 8:30 yet.
How long would you like me to talk?
You could wow us with something in the Czech language if you'd like.
No, I am really here just to stand up and say that I hope we vote against this resolution. I think the resolution has numbers in it. It doesn't simply say. It urges the selectmen and the school committee to negotiate. It gives a specific amount. It's sort of the first step, as Dre Hunter indicated, towards having this entire matter voted by town meeting. And I agree with the previous speaker, this is really just one piece of an overall budget. And if we start doing that, everything's open for town meeting votes, every dollar amount. So I'm against voting for this resolution. I think what, the fact that we voted for Article Two has already sent a message to the Board of Selectmen, and I hope that it has also sent a message to the unions, that there is, as Mrs. Chang pointed out, perhaps some negotiation to be done between what the benefits are for the active members and the inactive, and let the Board of Selectmen and the school committee take it from there. So let's not vote for this resolution.
Seeing nobody standing, we'll vote. All in favor of the resolution, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, say nay.
Nay.
The motion has not carried. It is lost. We'll move to Article Three and the last article, dealing with repurchase of a cemetery grave lot. Mr. Kavakov moves that the town appropriate $510 for the purpose of repurchasing Grave Lot 195 located in Section 9 Woodland Cemetery, and to raise such amount, $310, be transferred from the new perpetual care fund, and $200 be transferred from the cemetery land fund. Do I hear a second?
Second.
It's been raised and seconded, Mr. Kavakov.
Selectmen recommend the article?
Finance Committee.
The Finance Committee recommends the article.
Comments? None. All in favor of the motion as read, say aye. Opposed, say nay. Motion carries unanimously. I'll take one more motion. This is yours, Dory.
I move adjourn this meeting.
Do I hear a second?
Dissolve.
Dissolve, right. Do I hear a second? All in favor of dissolving the meeting, say aye. Opposed, say nay. Meeting's dissolved.[1390.88]